Good morning, everyone. My name is Elliot Payne. I'm the president of Minneapolis City Council. And before we convene our meeting, we have presentations of honorary resolutions. We are pleased to welcome guests to this space to share in these presentations before taking up our agenda. First up is a resolution recognizing International Transgender Day of Visibility in the city of Minneapolis, and I will welcome up Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President Payne. Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Andrea Jenkins, and I am the council member representing Ward Eight in South Minneapolis. I'm also proud to be representing the trans and gender nonconforming community today, as I do each and every day, but it's especially poignant on this day, International Transgender Day of Visibility. And, you know, one of the reasons why we need to have this recognition or this day to lift up trans and gender nonconforming people is because this community has been under attack by so many entities, but most recently and most deleteriously by the current administration in the White House. And it's not just them. In almost all 50 states, there have been over 400 bills and legislation passed to limit transgender nonconforming people's access to public accommodations, to housing, to job opportunities. They are even banning young transgender nonconforming people from playing sports, which is tragic, in my opinion. But this resolution, recognizing March 31st, 2025, as the International Transgender Day of Visibility offered by the city of Minneapolis, reads, "Whereas, the International Transgender Day of Visibility holiday was founded in 2009 as a reaction to the lack of LGBTQIA-plus holidays that celebrate the successes and accomplishments of trans and gender nonconforming people. And whereas the city of Minneapolis was the first city in the United States to have an openly transgender person serving as the president of the city council," that would be me, by the way. Having just previously made history as the first city in the United States to have two black openly transgender council members elected to its body, and whereas Minneapolis was the first city in the United States to ban discrimination on transgender identity 50 years ago, when it amended its civil rights ordinance in 1975 by adding language banning discrimination based on having or projecting a self-image not associated with one's biological maleness and/or one's biological femaleness. And I think we have to thank then-councilmember Hofstadter, am I correct?
Mayor Hofstadter.
Mayor Hofstadter for bringing forth that amendment. Whereas the city of Minneapolis has continued to make efforts to reduce the significant disparities in employment, healthcare, safety, housing, and access to public spaces, as well as other areas largely through the Transgender Issues Work Group created in 2014 and the Transgender Equity Council created in 2017. And whereas in 2014, it is believed that Minneapolis was the first city in the nation to host a city-sponsored transgender equity summit, an annual event drawing increased participation each year upwards of 300 attendees. In the fall of this year, the city of Minneapolis will proudly host the 10th Annual Trans Equity Summit. And whereas, the transgender equity summit is a result of collaborative efforts of various city departments, cross-governmental partners, community-based organizations, and community members rooted in the LGBTQIA-plus communities of Minneapolis. And whereas the establishment of the transgender equity council in 2017, a voluntary body comprised mostly of Minneapolis residents, has further enhanced community engagement and participation in the advancement of policies and procedures of the city of Minneapolis that impact the lives of transgender individuals. And whereas both the city of Minneapolis and the state of Minnesota signed executive orders to protect and support the rights of Minnesota's LGBTQIA-plus community members to safely seek and receive gender-affirming healthcare services, and an accompanying bill was passed at the legislature. This year, a new state law took effect requiring healthcare plans that cover physical and mental health services to also cover medically necessary gender-affirming care. And whereas our transgender and gender nonconforming community members, both locally and nationally, continue to be impacted by the proliferation of legislative attacks that perpetuate a culture of discrimination, harassment, and barriers to equal opportunities for the transgender community. And whereas it is incumbent on all of us to confront and condemn this harmful rhetoric and physical violence against our transgender community members with an intentional focus on trans youth and students who are experiencing group violence in schools. And whereas the International Transgender Day of Visibility is an annual holiday celebrated around the world that promotes the importance of recognizing and supporting the resilience and strength of our transgender and gender nonconforming community members on this day and every day. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby honor and recognize March 31st, 2025, as a day dedicated to celebrating the accomplishments and victories of the transgender and gender nonconforming people while raising awareness of the work that still needs to be done to save trans lives. Thank you. Thank you. And today we have here with us folks that are doing lifesaving work in trans and gender nonconforming communities, particularly with our young people and more broadly, the entire community. But I'm just hoping that some folks might be willing to share a couple of words about some of the work that you guys are doing.
Sure. My name is Kat Roan. I use they and she pronouns. I serve as Executive Director for Out Front Minnesota, our state's largest LGBTQ advocacy organization. You know, just a couple days ago, we held a youth summit with about 450 youth from all around the state. And the resounding thing that I heard from all of those people was, "This is a very scary time, particularly for trans folks in this country." But they are grateful to be here in Minnesota. And actions like these, as symbolic as they are, are commitments that mean something to our state's youth especially. Right now, we need to be visible, because visibility is being weaponized against our communities. It's being weaponized against trans folks, immigrant communities, folks who are in all sorts of intersectional lenses in our country right now. And our communities are feeling the brunt of that. We have watched as this federal government has eroded our civil rights, our basic access to identity documents, and our access to care, and all sorts of things. And here in Minnesota, it's incumbent on all of our leaders at every level of government to step up, to do what you can, to continue to speak up for our communities, so that we can continue to be vibrant and present members of the daily life here in Minneapolis and throughout the state of Minnesota. So grateful for the visibility that Councilmember Jenkins has shown through so many different aspects of our community's life and decades of commitment to this work, and grateful for this resolution and what it means. I would ask everybody present here today to continue to make those commitments to our trans youth, to our BIPOC communities, to all of those who are impacted by the harms being done by this administration. Thank you.
Thanks, Kat. Anyone else want to share a few comments, thoughts?
First, I want to say thank you to Councilmember Jenkins and the full body here, as well as Mayor Frye, for their continued support of our community. I think it's really important that Mayor Frye just recently issued a statement saying that Minneapolis is going to remain a safe space for transgender and immigrant communities. And I think that means everything to us. I feel really honored to be in this work with the folks on this body and longtime friend and looking to the leadership of Andrea for a long time. Both Anna and I have been working for a long time to provide access to healthcare, healing, and joy for our community. And we're doing that right now through an initiative at our space called The Cutie Castle. And as we're in The Cutie Castle, we're working to really look at housing and sheltering for trans and gender nonconforming folks. Do you want to say anything?
Well, thank you all for the work that you do, the life-affirming work that you do each and every day on behalf of transgender and gender nonconforming folks in our communities and more broadly in creating equity and equality for all in our community. So I just want to say a big thank you. Yeah, and, you know, as the resolution mentions that this work has been going on since 2014 here at the city and began much longer before that, in 1975, but we have to keep this work moving forward. As I prepare to leave public office, I hope that this legacy of work will continue at the city of Minneapolis. I know that representation does matter, and, you know, we have tried to lay the groundwork to keep this work perpetuating forward. So with that, I think we can pull in together for a photo opportunity and move on with the rest of our day.
Next, we will be welcoming up guests to recognize National Stress Awareness Month, presented by Councilmembers Jenkins, Palmisano, and Vitale.
We got a number of people coming in here. Some of those less familiar faces are our HR team, our benefits people specifically on HR. We have a special guest, and we've invited our first responders to join us today and tell us a little bit about what they do. So let's go ahead and start by reading the pretty short resolution recognizing April as National Stress Awareness Month. This is authored by myself, Councilmember Vitale, and Councilmember Jenkins. All right. "Whereas managing stress is an essential component of a healthy lifestyle. And whereas since 1992, April is recognized as National Stress Awareness Month, a time to raise awareness about the impact of stress on physical and mental health and promote strategies for stress management. And whereas while not all stress is bad, stress can affect your body, thoughts, feelings, and behavior, and being able to recognize common symptoms of stress can help you manage them." And?
"And whereas studies have shown that stress is one of the leading causes of health issues, contributing to conditions such as heart disease, anxiety, depression, and sleep disorders. And whereas, according to the American Psychological Association, more than 70% of adults report experiencing physical and emotional symptoms of stress, and the stress levels among residents of urban areas, including Minneapolis, have been shown to be higher than in rural regions due to factors such as work pressures, traffic, and cost of living. And whereas in Minneapolis, residents face unique challenges such as the pressures of competitive job market, high housing costs, and impacts of seasonal weather changes, which can contribute to elevated stress levels throughout the year.
"And a 2021 report by the Minnesota Department of Health revealed that mental health issues, including stress and anxiety, have been on the rise in the Twin Cities area, underscoring the need for increased awareness and resources for coping with stress. And whereas organizations in Minneapolis, including local nonprofits, healthcare providers, and educators have worked tirelessly to offer stress reduction programs, mental health support, and community wellness initiatives, encouraging residents to seek help and practice self-care. And whereas managing stress through healthy practices such as physical activity, mindfulness, social connections, and professional counseling can improve the well-being of individuals and strengthen the overall health and our community." And?
"Whereas National Stress Awareness Month serves as an opportunity for all citizens of Minneapolis to learn more about stress, recognize its impact, and take proactive steps toward better mental and physical health. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby recognize April as National Stress Awareness Month in the city of Minneapolis." Thank you. So stress is one of those things that can really sneak up on you and start to do damage before you even know that's happening. You know, that's one of the reasons why it's so important to recognize it and learn how to manage it. As we said, stress isn't necessarily bad, but our ability to cope with it is key to a healthy lifestyle. We have stress in our workplaces, our families, and our social circles. Every day in the national news, we're hearing about and stressed by another right being threatened, another group of people being targeted, another program being discontinued, layoffs, loss of funding for things that we hold dear, whether it's vaccine clinics or climate action. These affect the residents of our city every day. I invited our first responders to join us today in recognition of the stressful job that they have and that they are frequently dealing with people in hyper-stressful situations. We really owe them our thanks for their part in helping people in times when they have maybe not been as aware of the stress and its impact on their well-being. So I see we have 911, Jodi Hadney, and Fire, Linda Sone, here with us today. And I will also give a shout out to MPD and BCR Canopy Roots for the work that they do in our city. Did you say, "Police are here"? Thank you for being here. So with that, I'd like to introduce a guest speaker we invited, Mary Ann Johnson. She's a mindfulness and well-being instructor from the Bakken Center at the University of Minnesota to formally receive this resolution from the city and make some remarks.
Well, first off, we're just honored to be here. I'm just honored to be here representing the University of Minnesota and the Early Bakken Center for Spirituality and Healing to honor this proclamation and also just April as being National Stress Awareness Month. I don't need to go into more of the details about what stress feels like, looks like, and its rising numbers in America right now, along with that mental health issues and all the rest of it. What I will tell you is that at the Bakken Center, we're here to promote, as best we can, the mitigation of the impact of stress on our bodies, our communities, our families, our workplaces, and to honor resilience. And I really want to say that. At times like this, I think we can all pull on those people we know who demonstrate incredible resilience in the midst of difficulty, all of you standing here with me probably. And so what we do at the center, those of you who may not be familiar with us, is we do three simple things. Actually, they wouldn't say it's so simple, probably my researchers, but we conduct research, applying well-being and resilience in our communities. We also have academic courses. Of course, we're at the university. We have the country's first master's degree in health coaching. And then there's the division that I and others work in, and that's that we bring all the University of Minnesota's, as best we can, research and what we know about how to mitigate the impacts of stress in our lives into the communities, into workplaces. And many of those services, programs, you name it, since the beginning of the pandemic have been offered sliding fee scale or free. Access is super important to us, that everybody, not only in the city of Minneapolis, but the state of Minnesota, also has access to our resources. So to that end, I have given Ruth Olson a lot of information that she's promised that she's going to share all with you electronically, so that your employees and neighbors and families and friends and everybody in your community can gain access to these tips and resources on how to be more resilient, how to mitigate the impacts of stress in our lives. So again, just really pleased to honor this proclamation, all of your work, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Director Odom?
Sure. Prepared some remarks. So I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmembers Vitale, Palmisano, and Jenkins, and the members of council. I'm honored to support this resolution recognizing April as Stress Awareness Month. As we continue to serve our community with commitment and compassion, it's important that we acknowledge the very real impact stress can have on our health, our work, and our relationships, both at home and in the workplace. This resolution is more than symbolic, it's a call to action. It encourages us to reflect on how we can support wellness, reduce stigma around mental health, and build environments that foster balance and resilience. In the city workforce, we are committed to promoting well-being through resources like our employee assistance program, wellness initiatives, and a culture that values time to recharge. As a part of our commitment to a culture of wellness, I'm also excited to share that this June, the city will celebrate its second annual Wellness Month. We will be offering a series of activities designed to help city employees and their families connect, recharge, and take their wellness practices to the next level. From mindfulness workshops, fitness challenges, to community events, and family resources, it's all about making wellness more accessible and more sustainable. So thank you for advancing this important message. Let's continue to lead by example in recognizing the importance of mental health for ourselves and the people that we serve.
Would anybody else like to say anything? Joni, this is Director Hadney from 911.
Thank you. I first want to say thank you to councilmembers, the mayor, for supporting and continuing to support the 911 dispatch center in the stressful work that they do every day. Oftentimes, even when you step away from the job, people will ask you, "What was your most stressful call?" Or, "Isn't that a stressful job?" And it's something that's not even, you can't even describe it to a person, what these call-takers and dispatchers go through every day. I've often thought about how to give the best description to someone, and the next time you're watching your favorite action-packed movie or thriller, close your eyes. Just try to absorb what you're hearing and not what's being seen, and then try to describe it to somebody. And that's what these call-takers and dispatchers do every day for long shifts throughout the year. So I really appreciate the support that we've received from council all through the process to keep building things to help ease the stress on the call-takers. And this also happens to be in April. National Telecommunicator Week is coming up in the middle of April, so this is a good time to really recognize not only the good things they do, but the stresses they deal with.
Thank you.
Councilmember, just briefly, I see Amy Friedman's amongst you, and it would be amiss if I didn't call out that Amy has spent her career here at the city building and managing and promoting our wellness program, and she is a true ally to all of our departments. And when we are talking about mental wellness and well-being and health, Amy is central to that, so we should call her out while she's standing amongst you.
Thank you. I think many up here on this council have had an opportunity to be part of some of your work by sitting on a committee that you've been leading, so thank you for that. All right. Could we, we have to get in between these black pieces of tape for a quick photo.
Thank you for those presentations. At this time, I'm going to call this regular meeting of city council from March 27th to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Present.
Councilmember Vitale.
Present.
Councilmember Ellison.
Here.
Councilmember Kosky.
Present.
Councilmember Wonsley is absent. Councilmember Jenkins.
Present.
Councilmember Palmisano.
Present.
Councilmember Chowdhury is absent. Councilmember Cashman is absent. Councilmember Osman is absent. Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Vice President Shugtai is absent. President Payne.
Present.
There are eight members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Before we begin the meeting, I want to offer a friendly reminder to all members and staff that this meeting is broadcast live to enable greater public participation. The broadcast includes real-time The broadcast includes real-time captioning as a further method to increase the accessibility of our proceedings to the community. Therefore, all speakers need to be mindful of the rate of their speech, so that our captioners can fully capture and transcribe all comments for the broadcast. We ask all speakers to moderate the speed and clarity of their comments. With that, the agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Not seeing any. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Oh, sorry.
So moved.
I said second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the agenda is adopted. Now note, for the record, we've been joined by council members Chowdhury, Cashman, Osman, and Vice President Chugtai, and Wonsley. There we go. All right, the next item is acceptance of minutes from our regular meeting of March 14th. I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the minutes have been accepted. Finally, we have referral, the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those matters have been referred. The next order of business is presentations of reports from our standing committees. Those are taken in alphabetical order, beginning with the report of our Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. The Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee is bringing forward, excuse me, 21 items. The first is a gift acceptance for travel and lodging from every town for Gun Safety Support Fund. This item was approved at the committee, but we have since learned that the gift acceptance is no longer necessary, so I am moving to delete this item from the agenda. Number two is a gift acceptance from the Carbon Neutral Cities Alliance of Registration, Lodging, and Airfare. Three is a gift acceptance from the Big Cities Health Coalition of Lodging, Travel, Expenses, and Meals. Four is a gift acceptance from the National League of Cities for Travel, Lodging, and Meal Expenses. Five is a gift acceptance from the National Public Safety Partnership for Travel and Lodging Expenses. Six is a gift acceptance from the Link for Tickets to the Link Elevate and Empower Gala. Seven is a bid for Minneapolis Public Works Water Utility Supplies. Eight is a bid for the Green Storm Water Infrastructure Restoration Project. Nine is a bid for circular irrigated trench shields. Ten is a contract with Downtown Minneapolis Transportation Management Organization, Move Minneapolis for ABC Ramps, Multimodal Outreach Programs. Eleven is contract amendment with Restoration and Construction Services LLC for Pioneers and Soldiers Memorial Cemetery Masonry Repair Project. Twelve is contracts for 2025 through 2028 Customized Safety Training and Training Services Vendor Pool. Thirteen is contract with Metro Blooms Design and Build LLC for Private Property Tree Planting. Fourteen is contract with Seatool for Labor Standards and Claims Navigator Services. Fifteen is lease amendment with 2700 East 28th Street LLC for the Fire Department Employee Assistance Program Office Space. Sixteen is collective bargaining agreement Minneapolis Building Inspectors 2025 through 2027. Seventeen is a collective bargaining agreement International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local Number 292, 2025 through 2027. Eighteen is legal settlement workers' compensation claim of Shane Thorn. Nineteen is legal settlement workers' compensation claim of Melissa Rogers. And then twenty is contract with Cornerstone Advocacy Services for Sexual Assault Victims' Advocacy Services. And twenty-one is contract with Cure Violence Global for 2025 Minneapolis Strategic Outreach Initiative Technical Assistance Provider Services. I'll move approval of all items except item one, which I will move to delete from the agenda, item number nineteen. And I do know Councilmember Vitah will be bringing forward motion for item number six.
Councilmember Wonsley has moved approval of the report minus item number one. Is there any discussion, Councilmember, and nineteen, is there any discussion, Councilmember Vitah?
Thank you, Chair Payne. I'd like to amend item six to include accepting a donation for myself and Councilmember Jenkins.
Councilmember Vitah has moved an amendment to item number six. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Ellison.
So just to clarify, item one was moved, but it was moved for deletion, correct? Okay, got it, got it.
On the amendment for item number six, is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the amendment for item number six.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that amendment is adopted. We have the remainder of the items, including the underlying amended number six, including the deletion of item number one. Is there any discussion on the remainder of the agenda?
Nineteen was a separate vote.
And nineteen's a separate vote. Is there any discussion on the remainder? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted, including the deletion of item number one. Next, we will take up item number nineteen as an independent vote. Is there any discussion on that item? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Nay.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Nay.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes and 3 nays.
That carries, and the full report is adopted. The next report is from our Budget Committee, and that report will be presented by that committee's chair, Vice President Chugtai.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Committee is bringing forward one item for approval today, and that is approving three appointments to the 2025 Local Board of Appeal and Equalization. I'll move approval of this item.
Vice President Chugtai has moved approval of the Budget Committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we will have the report from the Business, Housing, and Zoning Committee, which will be given by the committee's chair, Councilmember Osman.
Thank you, President Payne. Business, Housing, Zoning Committee will be bringing 17 items today. Item one is approving an extended hours operation license for Biza Karma. Item two is approving a liquor license for Nako. Item three is approving liquor license for Solia. Item four is a resolution authorizing host approval for the issuance of bond for Wonderful Foundation. Item five is a passage of ordinance related to prohibiting the use of Alkathem devices on rental rates. Item six, this item was a license verification for Lakata Restaurant. However, we have an update. Staff had received their tax clearance letter, and therefore, the item will be removed from the agenda today. Item seven is denying a variance appeal to Timothy Baylor for the project at 1302 Douglas and 1716 Vermont Avenue. Item eight is approving five liquor license. Item nine is approving 211 liquor license renewal. Item 10 is a passage of ordinance related to the building requirement for food lockers. Item 11 is a resolution approving guidelines for Cultural Business Week celebration. Item 12 is approving financing for 2011 Pittsburgh Avenue. Item 13 is approving a loan for passage community at 1724th Street. Item 14 is approving the Minneapolis Affordable Rental Stabilization Grant Award. Item 15 is authorizing exclusive development rights to North Fate for property at 1014 and 1026 Plymouth Avenue. Item 16 is authorizing a grant agreement funding for cannabis technical assistance services. Item 17 is a resolution approving the Business Revitalization Program in Uptown. Lastly, resolution, item 18 is a resolution approving financing for Spring Minor Project. With that, I'll move all items on this, on this item, on this agenda, and also I will delete item six. Thank you, Council President.
Councilmember Osman has moved approval of the committee's report, including the deletion of item number six. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. I do want to motion for items number four and five to have a separate discussion and vote.
Councilmember Wonsley has moved for a separate vote for items number four and five. Is there any discussion on the remainder of the agenda? Councilmember Cashman. Oh, Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm having computer difficulties, so I can't sign into speaker management, but I wanted to be recorded as recusing myself on item number seven.
Okay, I think the clerks got that. Is there any discussion on the remainder of these items? Councilmember Wonsley, are you first in queue on this, or did they just not get that updated? Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I just want to take an opportunity to thank staff for a couple of items on the agenda today. First of all, number 14, the Affordable Rental Stabilization Grant Awards. There's a grant award going to Paris Foundation, which oversees and champions Paris Hill, an intentional housing community in Lowry Hill that supports and empowers young people who have experienced foster care to develop and thrive. This organization is a really critical bridge in Hennepin County to interrupt the foster care to homelessness pipeline by supporting young people and helping them live independently along the Hennepin Avenue corridor in Ward 7. So I'm really grateful for staff who have recognized Paris Hill for this funding opportunity. I also want to thank the CPED staff who worked so hard to turn around on a quick timeline resources for business district support grants for Uptown. So this money is becoming available to nonprofits in the Uptown area to do different types of events and activations. It was really important for us to get this funding out before the summer, so that we can see a lot of great activations to bring more foot traffic to the small businesses along Hennepin Avenue, and thankful for all their work defining boundaries in Uptown that included both Ward 7 and Ward 10. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you. I wanted to speak briefly to item number seven. This passed through our committee, and the staff recommended denying this appeal. And I just want to encourage the developer to continue working with the neighbors on that development, so they can find mutual ground and keep working with our staff to support that. Thank you.
Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you. I also just wanted to give a few shout-outs for staff's work. You know, in biz, we get to see our staff do the hard work of trying to make the city work both economically, housing-wise, affordably. It's really important work. I know every committee is very important work, but I'm partial to the work that we do in the biz committee and the work that staff does and brings before us. And so I just want to give that general shout-out to CPED. I feel like they can't get enough praise in the work that they do, especially when we're sort of facing everything from budget shortfalls. We're in a situation where all the good work that we've done on housing affordability is really fragile. I don't think we spend a lot of time contending with how fragile our housing work is right now, and our staff are doing everything that they can to make sure that we are in a really good position. So I just wanted to highlight two things that I think are important. One is just the Cultural Business Week celebrations. This is one of those places that, this is one of those areas in which we get to see how our economic development is not only supported through dollars and cents, but how it's supported culturally, how it's supported philosophically, as something that we as a city want to see. We want to see Black Business Week, we want to see Latino Business Week, we want to see strong guidelines, we want to see those programs grow, and we want to see those programs grow into other communities over time. And so just really want to thank staff for all the work that they've done to continue our Cultural Business Week celebrations. And then the second thing is, I also wanted to touch on, I'm glad Councilmember Cashman was able to shout out the Affordable Rental Stabilization Grant Awards, but I also want to remind folks that this funding came about because the operating expenses for pretty much every single affordable housing provider are outpacing, they can't keep up with them, right? And so we created this funding opportunity for that reason, but I think we really need to be tracking how these dollars get, not how they get spent in like a oversight way, but I think we need to be tracking to what degree these dollars are helping our nonprofit housing providers stay open, stay whole, and making sure that we're really on top of that issue. We would hate to, I would hate to see all the work that we've done over the last four years sort of be undone, because these operating expenses are spiraling out of control, we don't have enough resources to keep, stay on top of it, and then we start seeing our, we start seeing our affordable housing stock get offloaded, get sold to the open market. And so, so just great work on both those items from staff, and that's all I wanted to say.
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Council President Payne. Similar points to Councilmember Ellison about the Minneapolis Affordable Rental Stabilization Program. A little bit more for the public, it's going to help preserve 203 affordable units, including 115 units of affordable to households at or below 30% AMI, and 86 units dedicated to households exiting homelessness. So there's really important work that needs to happen here in our city. But again, like Councilmember Ellison said, we do need to figure out and make sure that we are tracking this, to make sure that it is working. Particularly, very excited that one of the grant awardings is to Bloom Lake Flats. I think his building that I have been meeting with, with my community in Ward 9 for a while, about some of the stress that they are facing when it comes to the services that they're being able to provide. So hopefully, this can help them get back to a flow as well. So thankful to CPED for the work that they are doing to help these folks stay afloat. Thanks.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to just quick highlight item number 16, which is a cannabis technical assistance grant agreement. Just wanted to make sure that we took a moment to uplift this. This is pretty exciting, because we're looking at a new area of economic development within the city of Minneapolis as it comes to cannabis-related businesses, dispensaries, as the first rounds of licenses are being worked on at the state level, and we're working on our zoning. This is just a great step forward to ensure that working people and BIPOC community members can get the assistance in making cannabis businesses thrive. And I think it's really important, as we're stepping into this, to continue the focus on having local businesses be the ones that take this up, and not large corporations that we're seeing throughout the nation. This is a good first step, and just looking forward to seeing how this pairs with the new licenses we'll be seeing in our city in the coming years.
Vice President Chugtai.
I'm really excited that these are a couple of the allocations that were made throughout the budget process to support the revitalization of Uptown and, you know, joining in the praise for our staff in the Community Planning and Economic Development Department. They've worked so quickly to get these programs up and running and get some of these resources out into the community and just really, really appreciate that. I will say Councilmember Cashman and I had the opportunity to meet with a couple hundred residents and business owners in the Uptown area on Monday this week. And really what we heard from, from our residents, our constituents, is the deep urgency for, for the city to be a partner and to work, to work together with our, our community to, to expand efforts, establish efforts to, to revitalize Uptown. And this is one way that we are, you know, turning, we're demonstrating that we as a city are committed to the revitalization of Uptown. So thank you to our CPED staff and I'm really excited to see this, these resources come to our community.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I also just wanted to note my recusal from item number seven.
Councilmember Osman.
Thank you so much, Council President. I want to speak on item 10, passage of ordinance related to the building requirement for food lockers. This item has been in work and I want to thank CPED staff for their help. What this does is this will be the first food lockers in Minnesota, I mean, sorry, food lockers in Minnesota, which would increase access to emergency food for those who are unable to get a food shelf during the regular operating hours. So this what does is that my, my ward has Community Emergency Services, which is the largest food shelf in the state. There's people that line up, so now people have access to, you know, reserve their pickup for, for food shelf and then come pick it up during the off hours. Can you imagine like when folks that are struggling with childcare and, and, you know, getting off their school, but at the same time they have to be in line to get food. It's now, this will make it easier for them to pick up their food during the off hours. And this has been a wonderful tool and very creative way to really help the communities that need the most. And this was, work was pushed by Second Harvest Heartland and Community Emergency Services. So really excited this finally something that, that will happen. So thank you, Council President.
With that, I'm not seeing anybody else in queue. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the committee report minus items four and five and deleting item number six.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitam.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye, on all except abstain from number seven.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on the report except for number seven, which has 11 ayes and two abstentions.
And you required abstention for Councilmember Jenkins.
Correct, because she previously stated that.
Okay, thank you. Those items carry. Next, we will take up items four and five both separately. So we will start with item number four. Is there any discussion on item number four? Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. I just wanted to note that I'm going to be voting against this item as I have against other charter school bonds that have come before these, this body. We often don't see this, but when we do, I typically do vote against them. And I just want to name opposition to this doesn't have anything to do with this specific school or any commentary or perspectives about the programs that they're running, but it is rather a principal opposition in recognizing that I don't believe the city of Minneapolis should be financing charter schools, especially when our public school system is experiencing drastic divestment and a significant budget hole. So just wanted to note that for the record.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will ask, ask the clerk to call the roll on item number four.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Vitam.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Nay.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
No.
Councilmember Cashman.
Nay.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Nay.
President Payne.
Nay.
There are seven ayes and six nays.
That item carries. Next, we will take up item number five, the rental algorithm ordinance. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Wonsley. Oh, Councilmember Wonsley.
Okay. Thank you, President Payne. First, I'm excited to bring this ordinance forward for approval for, well, by council. This ordinance would make the city of Minneapolis the third city in the nation to ban algorithms that use non-public data to advise landlords on rent and vacancy levels. Minneapolis is over 50% renters and approximately one in seven units in the Twin Cities is managed using rental algorithms. In these units, renters pay on average about $312 more per year. And buildings that use these algorithms also have eviction rates that are significantly higher than buildings that are managed without them. Big corporate landlords that use these algorithms, use it to manipulate the market and essentially exploit renters. And that's why cities like San Francisco and Philadelphia have already banned them and why there's current legislation at the Minnesota State Legislature to ban them. It's also why the Biden Department of Justice and more than 10 attorney generals across the country, including our own Attorney General Ellison, are currently suing one of the companies that provide these algorithms and six of the largest landlords in the country that use the software. Of the six landlords that's currently using the software and are currently under the lawsuits by the Department of Justice, five of them operate right here in Minneapolis. And one landlord, Gray Star in particular, operates several buildings in the university area, though I know they have properties all across the city as well. And I will name student renters are particularly vulnerable to exploitation due to many of them being first time renters and also because they're constrained for needing housing that's close to campus. And many of these renters are thus forced to work multiple jobs, to pay their rent to these multi-billion dollar companies, or to have to take out additional student loans in order to pay just rent. And this is one clear way that we can prevent some of the most egregious, destructive practices that landlords like Gray Star are using to essentially institute housing instability for many of our residents. So given this context, it's very clear to me and I know my co-authors that this software has no place in a city where we constantly are championing a housing market that is equitable and affordable for all renters. And I hope this will earn the support of all of my colleagues and specifically in recognizing we need to make sure that we're addressing all practices within our housing market that is being used by landlords who exploit our renters, and this is just one of them. So with that, I'll stand for any questions, but I know possibly my co-authors might have additional comments to make as well.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Who would first yield to the other author, Councilmember Ellison, if you'd rather?
I'm happy to, happy to jump, thank you. I think Councilmember Wonsley said it really well, but I wanted to just add a few, a few other points. You know, there was one of, one of the folks who came and gave and testified, sort of gave a scenario that said, hey, look, when, when a bunch of, if all the top landlords of these companies were to get in a room together and collude on what the rent should be, that would be against the law. That would be antitrust violation. So why is it all of a sudden legal for them to just have an algorithm break the law on their behalf? It's not legal. DOJ didn't think it was legal before this prior administration. 10 other attorney generals across the country don't think it's legal. And so that's why we're going ahead and we're addressing this. Now, in this, where this algorithm, where this, this technology has become exacerbated, it has wreaked havoc on renters there. And it, we are not at that level of scale yet in Minnesota, but it is here, as noted by my colleague. I think that we should be working to ban this technology now until we further understand it, until we can, until there's better regulation to ensure that antitrust is not violated. And, and I think that if we wait until this kind of, these kinds of tools are occupying 30% of our market, 50% of our market, 70% of our market, then all of a sudden, we're going to be looking around being like, oh my God, we're, we're not, we're not protecting our renters. And then we're going to be wanting to get really aggressive about this policy and it'll be hard to enforce then. Right now, doing education is on our side. We tend to get good compliance when we do education with landlords. When regulatory, regulatory services does that, we get good compliance. That's, that's one of the reasons to do it. We've got a low barrier to, a relatively low barrier to cross here. We have tenant advocates and tenants who have discovered these tools and, and I think that this equips them to be able to protect themselves through private right of action should they face violations. And it's, at least right now, it will be a low barrier thing for regulatory services to take on. This will not be some, some new division that they have to take on. It will not be a whole new set of FTEs that they have to take on in order to enforce this, at least for now. If we wait for the problem to grow, if we wait for this to become a cancer within the state of Minnesota, then we might be having a different conversation about what level of resources regulatory services will need in the future to handle the problem. So I hope my colleagues support this. Again, it's, we're at a stage where it is, it is so obvious the right thing to do and it doesn't, and it's not going to cost us a whole ton to enforce it. I think we pass this kind of legislation now so that we don't have headaches and heartache in the future. That's all.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, President Payne. I appreciate, I greatly appreciate attorney generals in this country going after large players about collusion, but that's not something we can do here. And I understand the intent behind this ordinance. It's good. I agree that rents need to be set according to market conditions and not artificially influenced by technology, but I cannot support this and I question if it's really going to impact the type of property owner that you're going after or even be enforceable. There's no way to show from a private action standpoint that this was used or not. I've spoken with both large and small portfolio rental property owners in my ward and in our city, and they agree that if, if prohibiting the use of rental algorithms, algorithmic devices makes an impact on the way they set rents at all, it will be felt more acutely by the small owners, not the large, out of town corporate entities. These are folks who live locally and they own a couple properties to earn income, to build wealth. They don't have the knowledge or the experience or the number of properties to inform their decisions about setting rent. Larger portfolios already do. They already have those data points at their fingertips. I can also see the flip side of this, that prohibiting the use of algorithms could also keep rents higher than the market supports because property owners don't have the data showing that supply and market conditions have changed and no longer support the rents that they've set. Owners, particularly smaller owners, might be slower to adjust to changing market conditions. I listened to the discussion at Biz and Councilmember Ellison admitted that these algorithms are not being used prolifically in Minnesota yet. And the impetus for this legislation comes from the legal or the legislative actions in other states and that the authors here with this initiative are trying to be preemptive. Fair enough, but this seems like a solution looking for a problem that doesn't exist here. I'm also skeptical that renters or their advocates will really be able to tell when or if algorithms are being used. As for enforcement, good faith compliance, as Councilmember Ellison mentioned in committee, is great, but we have no real mechanisms to enforce this. We have no way to enforce this. So I guess it won't take staff time at least. Education is good. This is complaint based. If someone is reported, our enforcement is basically going to ask them if they're using algorithms to re-educate them and then remind them that they're not supposed to. The property owner would have to admit that they broke the rules before reg services could take action against the rental license. This is enforcement done on a wing. I just can't imagine when this would actually happen. So I appreciate this coming forward and I won't be able to support it today. Thank you.
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Council President Payne. I'm excited to bring this forward with Councilmember Wonsley and Councilmember Ellison. I think it's a practical resolution that is pretty straightforward. I think it's important to note that Twin Cities renters and units managed with algorithms paid on average 324 more per year than renters and units that were not managed by these algorithms. $324 is a lot of money. It is money that residents can use to pay their rent. It is money that residents can use to pay for their foods at a time when many of our constituents can't even afford to stay afloat. I think it is important that we pass this ordinance to ensure that residents aren't being forced to pay more than they're supposed to on their rent. I think that is the central key component of this ordinance, making sure that we can keep people in their homes to prevent displacement, to prevent people from being evicted unjustly, to ensure that someone can actually stay in their home. $324 is a lot of money that can help someone stay in their home. That is a central reason for me of like working on this ordinance with my colleagues, making sure that people can stay in their homes. I think that's a key component and one of the priorities of the city of Minneapolis. So I just want to at least highlight that component because I don't want us to forget why we're doing this and it's that we want to keep people in their homes. Thank you.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. I just wanted to offer some corrective statements to one that was raised by Councilmember Palmasano earlier in regards to the enforcement, especially since we had a very thorough presentation in Biz and also have worked very closely with our city attorneys and regulatory staff, CPED staff, to really think very clearly about how this could be enforced. And the enforcement mechanisms that have been recommended for this policy actually fall in alignment with most of our tenant protections. In terms of how it will be enforced, it will be done through a mechanism of self-attestation, which will happen when a property owner or landlord seeks to renew their license and they have to verify if they're using it. It also will include, yes, a complaint based system, which is part of most of our tenant protections in terms of how we enforce them, and also will include the provision around private right of action. Regulatory services also has a number of tools in which they can use an act recourse. They can move a property owner to a different rental tier, they could extend a revocation of a license. There's a multitude of tools that staff has thought very clearly through of how they can enforce this using existing resources as my co-author, Councilmember Ellison, highlighted. So I just want to highlight there was very much thoughtful engagement done around the enforcement of this policy in combination with our subject matter experts here at the city as well as across the nation. And also I just want to second again Councilmember Ellison's concerns and would say actually many of my residents in my ward would disagree that this is not a problem. It is absolutely a problem for them. As Councilmember Chavez highlighted, $312 means a lot for an ordinary working class person or someone working two jobs just to afford their rent. It makes a lot of a difference for them and that's hundreds of residents that's experiencing that reality right now because of the implementation and use of this technology. So I just wanted to offer some of those corrections and you all can find the presentation also on LEMS that was done by Councilmember Ellison and also reinforced with our staff.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just real briefly, I want to thank the authors of this policy and the staff that they had the opportunity to work with in crafting it for bringing this proposal forward. I believe, you know, just in reviewing the materials and the discussion at committee on this, on this ordinance change, you know, I found that, that one in seven renters in Minneapolis is living in a unit that, where the owner is, is using algorithms to set the price of rent, right? And, you know, about half the population of Minneapolis is renters. And so if we're talking about one in seven renters, we're actually talking about like upwards of 30,000 people. That's not a small amount of people in our city that's impacted by this, by the use of. That's not a small amount of people in our city that's impacted by this, by the use of this type of technology. And as Councilmember Chavez pointed out, we're talking about multiple hundreds of dollars more being paid by about 30,000 of our constituents who live in this city, right? That's approximately the size of an entire ward. That's, that's significant, and I'm really glad that we're being proactive in impacting or in, in trying to intervene in this process. I know the vast majority of my constituents are renters, and this is something that is about protecting, protecting so many of our constituents and half the residents who live in our city in a proactive manner. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Ellison.
I wanted to give just one last point about discussion, about enforcement, because I think that's an important discussion. How do we enforce this, right? And, and I think that we like to sometimes imagine enforcement as us having maybe somebody's arm, like, in some kind of, like, tie, and we can crank on their arm hard enough and make them do what we want. That's actually not how any of our enforcement works at the city. Our enforcement at the city works in a series of scaffolds for, you know, to maybe use a colloquialism. We build on the information that we gain over time. And self-attestation might sound like nothing until, until a landlord lies, and then that lie, once discovered, strengthens a private right of action. That's not small at all. That's not, that's not, that's not, that's not nothing, right? And so this is about building tools so that we can start to strengthen our ability to enforce this. And yes, right out the gate, day one, it's going to be, there's going to be a learning curve for staff, there's going to be a learning curve for tenants, but tenants are the ones who discovered that they were impacted by these technologies. And so to say that there's no way for tenants to ever be able to tell, well, history just doesn't affirm that, right? History affirms the opposite, that tenants are the ones who have been able to discover that they are, that they're victims to these antitrust violations. And so to me, I think we're building a scaffold of enforcement that is going to allow us to get the information, that's going to allow us to build on that information, that's going to allow us to build on infrastructure, and then allow tenants to leverage that infrastructure in order to hold, in order to protect themselves from aggressive rent hikes. And so that, that's how I think about enforcement here at the city, and that's how I, that's how I believe and have witnessed enforcement work, especially new enforcements. They don't come right out the gate as, as arm twisting. They come, they come as, as sets of information that we then build on until we have something that we can really utilize. So just wanted to offer that.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to speak in affirmative of this and also share that I had a lot of constituents in my ward reach out in support of this ordinance and this work. A lot of those constituents have connected this to what's happening at the federal level. We no longer have a watchdog at the federal level as it comes to preventing monopolization and also things like price fixing. And so it makes a lot of sense for the city of Minneapolis right now to take action in offense to protect our renters, but also protect the market. I also think that in thinking about this, our city is going to need to be in a future where we have stronger tenants' unions and people that have better support from local governments that are renters. That's a significant gap, and that's how we ensure that folks are able to use the tools that are there before them, and this is a tool that we're creating. And then also down the line, this is just foundational. If there's additional ways to strengthen enforcement, say, we would like the city of Minneapolis itself to go up against these corporations should they act in a manner that violates our code, I think that's something that's worth exploring. But this is very timely, and our residents see the effort that we're making, especially when we have a federal level that is opening the floodgates for big tech to profit at the expense of everyday working people.
Councilmember Kosky.
Thank you, President Payne. I just had a question maybe for one of the authors, just about the differentiation or maybe what you guys learned about, I'm just hearing some conversations around larger-scale landlords versus smaller mom-and-pop landlords. So I'm just curious if you could just describe, I'm not in the Biz Committee, and apologies, wasn't able to ask that question there, what you've kind of learned, you know, who is using this, right, this tool right now? Is it mom-and-pop, or is it just the larger? And just differentiate between those two. So I'm looking at both, Councilmember Wonsley and Ellison. Both of you can chime in, whichever one.
Yeah, so on the surface value of the ordinance itself, it really is getting at the antitrust piece. So it doesn't delineate between large landlords, small landlords. Again, that's on the enforcement action in terms of when a property manager's, you know, goes for verification of their license, they will have to verify, and we could then track there. But we do know right now is our largest corporate landlords that are using this technology. Council Vice President highlighted the one-in-seven figure. And again, on the ordinance's surface level, it's really about making sure that, you know, non-public competitor data is not being used in order to fix rents, which is currently happening amongst these, these services. And I'll pass it to Councilmember Ellison.
I would affirm, it doesn't delineate between small or big landlords. It's really about the technology itself, and so AI, AI use, right, based technology, and in any ways in which the technology is used in a way that violates antitrust laws, that's what we're, that's how we're defining, you know, who we're going after in this, in this ordinance.
Thank you, that's helpful. And then some of the other studies and the other, I know attorney generals, and you said the DOJ, was it predominantly studying these larger landlords or where they were seeing violations, or was it for smaller landlords as well across the country?
I think, I think the, the examples were mostly larger landlords were using this. They own the most units, they have the most incentive to use these, this kind of technology.
And the resources to use that technology.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to add myself to queue. Just that one of the points raised here is that it seems like this is maybe a little bit too early or too soon to start implementing this type of regulatory framework, and I, I don't think this is a moment where we need to take a wait-and-see approach. My favorite quote is, "The future is already here, it's just not evenly distributed." And so you can apply that quote to the fact that, you know, student housing has a lot of demand, a lot of geographic constraint, and so it is an area that is getting, you know, a higher saturation of these type of algorithms within those rental units compared to, say, my ward that is largely duplexes that are typically the type of rental unit that's in my ward. You're not seeing that a lot in the duplex, small mom-and-pop landlords, but you are seeing it pretty heavily in these larger corporately-owned buildings. You don't need to wait and see to see that it is not going to be feasible to manage a rental property without having this type of technology in the future. And you also don't need to do a lot of guesswork to realize that the existence of mom-and-pop landlords will go away under this paradigm, because, again, the future is already here, it's just not evenly distributed. You can look at other industries that are heavily driven by algorithmic pricing. One of those industries is the healthcare industry. And what's happened over the last 10 or 20 years is that large hospital systems have implemented algorithms to look at billing codes for every single procedure and add new billing codes onto a procedure so that they can maximize their revenue. And the hospital systems that haven't gotten that level of sophistication either go out of business or more likely than not get acquired. And so you can have that scale of applying that algorithm to price all of those procedures. And then in kind, you have a competitive algorithm that the health insurers use that are trying to detect the algorithmic pricing that hospitals are using. It's called payment integrity. There's an entire industry surrounding this, and it's warring algorithms, one's trying to maximize revenue and one's trying to minimize claims. And we've seen how that's played out in headlines recently around some of the really unethical practices in healthcare. I don't want to see these types of practices that are leading people to declare bankruptcy for getting medical procedures lead to, get applied in the context of housing. Algorithms, AI is this new flashy word. All it is, is another interpretation of an algorithm. And we've had algorithms being used in commercial settings for many, many years. We don't need to guess at what their, their aims are, we don't need to guess at what their impact is. We know that, and we can project that, any housing provider that is not using an algorithm, if it's on an unregulated environment, will get acquired by a larger one. Every one of our rental units will ultimately be under the ownership of one large owner who is deploying these algorithms. And I, I think that it's very wise of us to just recognize that reality right now, today, and take some action on it. So for that reason, I'll be supporting this. And seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
No.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
No.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes and two nays.
That carries, and that is the final item on the Biz report, so all items are adopted. Next, we have our Climate and Infrastructure Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Climate Infrastructure Committee is bringing nine items forward. Item one is project approval and adopting special assessments for the 24th Street East Resurfacing Project. Item two is passage of an ordinance related to water service and terminology revisions. Item three is designating the location, cost estimates, and easements for the 2025 Alley Reconstruction Project. Item four is amending the 2025 Capital Improvement Project by decreasing appropriations for alley renovation and increasing for unpaved alley construction. Item five is authorizing a cooperative funding agreement with the Hennepin County for pedestrian safety and traffic signal improvements on Broadway Street Northeast. Item six is authorizing a cooperative agreement with Hennepin County Regional Railroad Authority for the Nicolat Avenue Bridge over the Midtown Greenway. Item seven is concurring with the city engineer's request for a variance from the state aid operations rules for 8th Street Southeast and 10th Avenue Southeast. Item eight is approving the concept layout for the Logan Park Industrial Reconstruction Project Phase One. Item nine is passage of a resolution in support of the Gold Line Bus Rapid Transit Extension Project from downtown St. Paul to downtown Minneapolis. I will move all, approval of all these items.
Councilmember Cashman has moved approval of the committee report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Palmasano.
Mr. Chair, just a quick comment about items number three and four related to alley reconstruction. This one block of the alley between Columbus and Park Avenues is our only alley reconstruction project this year. Of the hundreds of miles and thousands of blocks of alleys, we are working on one block. I absolutely understand that we have higher purpose needs for our capital investment funds, but I am concerned that we're headed toward a huge cliff of failing alleys if we can only continue at the pace of one alley per year. And this one was still unpaved. This is part of our unpaved alley program. The council president and I have a legislative directive which will receive a report back at the next Climate and Infrastructure Committee meeting. It's on April 10th, and I look forward to hearing more about how alleys are evaluated for inclusion in our capital improvement program, especially unpaved alleys like this one, and then how we manage those assets. So, thank you, I just needed to note that.
Thank you for noting that. I was going to speak on that as well. My ward has still a small number of unpaved alleys. That might be just me and your wards at this point, but there's definitely a greater need for alley maintenance, alley reconstruction than has been budgeted for over many, many years, which has gotten us to this point. And I'm looking forward to learning about the answers from our legislative directive. One area of industrial that's getting reconstructed is the Logan Park Reconstruction Project. I'm grateful to staff for separating out the Quincy Street from the other aspects of that project. There was still a lot of questions around the Tyler Street component of that reconstruction project. Staff has been working really closely with stakeholders on that side of the project. I know not everybody is happy, but they have been very accommodating, and I'm looking forward to staying engaged with that community as construction gets underway. So with that, I'm not seeing anybody else in queue, so I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the report.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins is absent. Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury is absent. Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai is absent. President Payne.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The next report is from the Committee of the Whole, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, President Payne. The Committee of the Whole is bringing forward four items. Item number one is confirming the city clerk's appointment of Kelly to the position of the Chief Assistant City Clerk. Item number two is authorizing five contracts for the 2025 Minneapolis services. Item number three is considering a resolution approving funding for violence interrupters to Cedar Riverside and Elliott Park. This item was sent forward without recommendation. And item number four is considering a legislative directive related to vendors providing violence interrupter services in the Elliott Park and Cedar Riverside areas. This item was also sent forward without recommendations. I'll move approval of items one through two and pull out items three to four for a separate vote. I believe there might be a discussion about moving this towards the end of the agenda as well.
Councilmember Chavez has moved items one and two of the committee's report. Is there any discussion on those items? Councilmember Wonsley.
Oh, sorry, I wanted to make sure, did, oh, are we moving number two for a second separate vote?
We can move item two for a separate vote if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
We are having a discussion on item number one. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I just wanted to thank Kelly Geisler for accepting this position of Chief Assistant City Clerk, bringing her talents to Minneapolis, back to Minneapolis from Rochester, and welcome her to the Legislative Department.
I would echo that sentiment, and seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on item number one.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins is absent. Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury is absent. Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai is absent. President Payne.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries, and that item is adopted. Next, we will take up-
Mr. President?
Yep.
If I could just for a moment indulge the, with the body's indulgence, say thank you for confirming my appointment of Ms. Geisler. She'll be an excellent addition to the team and to our department. She's in the audience right now, and I'm sure that she's grateful to finally know for sure she will be starting in the position on April 7th.
Thank you for that. Next, we will take up item number two. Is there any discussion on item number two?
I actually did, but the, okay, now it's finally. Took a minute for the speaker management to load.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Thanks, President Payne. I just wanted to share, I'm happy to, to support item number two, largely because I am finally seeing some improvement in the Neighborhood Safety Department. And I also know it took a enormous, enormous amount of oversight by both council and the public to hold the prior administration accountable to make sure that we're correcting persistent mismanagement issues within this department. And I can tell that oversight is paying off because earlier this week, NSD gave a very thorough presentation that provided data and mapped out a clear plan on how to move forward with these critical safety programs. And data and clear plans are not something that I will name and that the NYU Policing Report named was not heavily utilized in this department for over two years. And I just want to give kudos to all of the community members, our current staff in NSD and my colleagues who continue to hold a high standard for these services and make it clear that we are not going to settle for mismanagement of any public safety programs. And also, again, kudos to the current Neighborhood Safety Department staff. You are starting to rebuild confidence in this department and also showing a level of seriousness that has been lacking for quite some time. And I'm confident, if you continue at this pace, that residents will be absolutely safer because of it. So I just wanted to name that.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Mr. Chair, I'm pleased to see us finally enter into this contract and make good on our promise for a data-driven approach to violence interruption, to support to our vendors, and really important-
vendors, and really importantly, a way to track results and effectiveness. I believe that is due to Neighborhood Safety Department leadership of the past, of today, and of a lot of city staff in this administration. So, thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on item number two.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury is absent. Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman is absent. Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai is absent. President Payne.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries, and that item is adopted. Councilmember Jenkins, would you like to be recorded as an aye on the CNI agenda?
Without objection, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you. Next, we will take up item number three, and I'll call on Councilmember Osman.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to take this item on the end of the agenda. There's still some stuff I'm working on. Thank you.
Okay, I will move to take this item up under unfinished business, new business. Mr. Clerk?
I would simply say we'll take it up after we've concluded any unfinished business that's on the agenda.
All right, sounds good. Councilmember Osman, would you like to take up item number four now or also?
Same.
Same, at the end of the agenda. Okay. We will return to items number three and four once we get through the rest of the committee reports. Would you like to be recorded as an aye on the CNI agenda where you're here? Okay, without objection. Okay.
But, Mr. Chair, or Mr. President, to Councilmember Jenkins, who is absent for Cal I and Cal II, if we're just Cal I, if we want to change the record.
Councilmember Jenkins, would you like to be recorded as an aye on Cal item number Appointment of Ms. Geisler.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next report, well, let's see here. The next report is from our Intergovernmental Relations Committee, which I'll have our Vice Chair, Councilmember Rainville, report.
Thank you, President Payne. The committee, excuse me, wrong one. Thank you, Mr. President. The Intergovernmental Relations Committee is bringing forward one item, the 2025 Legislative Policy Positions Amendment, and I will move approval of this item.
Councilmember Rainville has moved approval of the IGR committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury is absent. Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai is absent. President Payne.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The final report will be offered by our Public Health and Safety Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Health and Safety Committee will be bringing forward five items. Item number one is passage of an ordinance amending provisions related to review panels for the Community Commission on Police Oversight. Item number two is authorizing a contract with the State Fair for additional law enforcement during the fair. Item number three is authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the BCA for an automobile theft prevention grant. Item number four is authorizing a contract with the BCA for the Minnesota Human Trafficking Investigators Task Force Full-Time Analyst. And item number five is authorizing a contract with the BCA for investigator participation on the Minnesota Human Trafficking Investigator Task Force. I'll move approval of these items, and I'll be voting no against item number two, so to make it easier for the clerks, I'll move that for a separate vote.
Councilmember Chavez has moved the report minus item number two. Is there any discussion on the remainder of the items? Don't see anyone in queue, so I'm gonna add myself. Just to add some clarity to the CCPO Temporary Panel Assignment Ordinance, there was some feedback about ensuring that if we do have these temporary panelists on a panel, that we might lose that continuity when it comes to policy recommendations. If it's a panel that's exclusively made up of our civil rights commissioners, I have spoken with both our city attorney and our civil rights director to ensure that there is always at least a CCPO commissioner that is present within those review panels so that we still have that continuity of understanding the actual incidents as they're reviewing them on the panel and how that might improve or make suggest recommendations for policies and procedures. So I just wanted to at least give that point of clarity for some of that feedback. But seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the report minus item number two.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury is absent. Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai is absent. President Payne.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. Next, we will take up item number two. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury is absent. Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai is absent. President Payne.
Aye.
There are nine ayes and two nays.
That item carries, and the full report is adopted. Thank you, colleagues. That completes the reports of all of our standing committees. The next order of business is notice of ordinance introductions. We have a notice today from Councilmember Wonsley, who is giving notice to her intent to introduce at the next meeting an ordinance amending Appendix J of the Code of Ordinances, adding fees related to city-owned resources referenced in Title IX. Are there any questions on this notice? Councilmember Wonsley?
Thank you, President Payne. So just a little context, colleagues. A few months ago, I brought forward ordinance alongside with Council, sorry, President Payne, that would enable the city to collect fees on the use of city resources by city employees doing outside work such as off-duty. This ordinance was approved unanimously, and it will allow the city to recoup the costs that MPD officers incur for when they are doing off-duty work. We also know a large reason for this is we really want to make sure that taxpayers are not having to continue to foot the bill for MPD's officer sidekicks. So that said, the ordinance I'm introducing today is a technical change to Appendix J, which is a section of the city code that outlines which chapters of the code include references to fees. The new fee on off-duty means that we need to add a new chapter to the list of chapters in Appendix J. This is a technical change, not a substantial one, and I look forward to seeing the results of the administration's fee study so that we can set the appropriate rate for off-duty fees to then be implemented starting early next year. So just wanted to give that context.
Seeing no one else in queue, that notice is hereby given, and no further action is required at this time. The next order of business is the introduction and referral calendar. First, we have a motion by Councilmember Chavez to amend the prior introduction of the subject matter of an ordinance related to commercial property sale, given at the regular meeting of the city council on February 8, 2024, by reassigning the proposed ordinance to Title 16 related to planning and development in a new chapter 426A, and to refer the matter to the Business Housing and Zoning Committee. Second, we have a motion by Councilmember Rainville, who moves to introduce, give first reading, and refer to the Climate and Infrastructure Committee and ordinance amending Title 15, Chapter 389 of the Code of Ordinances, amending provisions related to events at outdoor stadiums. Is there any discussion on these introductions? Councilmember Wonsley?
Thank you, President Payne. I wanted to note for the clerks that I would like to be added as a co-author to item number one, which is the Commercial Property Sale Ordinance being brought forward by Councilmember Chavez.
Great. Seeing no one else in queue, may I have a motion to approve these introductions?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Wonsley. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury is absent. Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai is absent. President Payne.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That motion carries, and the next order of business is resolutions. Today, we have two honorary resolutions as presented at the beginning of the meeting. Are there any questions or comments from council members? May I have a motion to adopt those resolutions? That's been moved and seconded. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury is absent. Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai is absent. President Payne.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and those resolutions are adopted. Our next order of business is a request for closed session. Before I recognize the attorney and we recess for closed session, I'll ask if there are any announcements from council members. Councilmember Palmasano.
Mr. Chair, I've been reflecting on what happened at our Committee of the Whole meeting earlier this week, specifically our lack of action on the ordinance that transfers policy and research functions from the auditor to the clerk. That's something important to me. It was intended to fix a conflict that exists between our city charter and how we've created those council support functions. Our city attorney informed us in a memo dated November 6 last year, and I went back to look at it, that this problem existed, and she offered a solution. That means we've known about this problem for more than four months. It's taken us four-plus months to respond to the fact that our city attorney pointed out a conflict in the city charter. And I'll remind our colleagues that we all took an oath to uphold the city charter. It's our duty to uphold the city charter. When I got that memo back in early November, I consulted our city clerk. I was told that council leadership, namely you, Council President Payne, and Council Vice President Shugtai, were working on addressing the issue, and I should expect something to come forward very soon. That was supposed to be mid-December, right around the time we adopted this year's budget. I gave it grace. We were getting a new auditor. But even then, it took almost two full months before that ordinance was even introduced. When it was, the entire draft ordinance was circulated and posted, and that's kind of unusual. That's not very common that we have all that language. So this entire council has had a little over a month to review that proposal and have any questions or concerns addressed. The change is pretty straightforward. It transfers policy, research, and oversight functions from the auditor, where it shouldn't be, to the clerk. Our city clerk, Casey Carl, gave a very detailed presentation at the committee explaining how those would be integrated into the clerk's office and that it could improve support services for this council. And I want to note that this body, not myself, but others on this body, have regularly said that they don't have what they believe is sufficient support. In fact, it's a regular complaint from this day, is that nothing has been done on the legislative branch of government structure, and that's certainly not because our staff haven't been trying. It's because we can't make timely decisions, even when the city attorney clearly states there's a conflict with the city charter, even when the city auditor concurs and recommends those functions to be transferred, even when our city clerk explains in extraordinary detail how those functions could be transferred and improved. Instead, President Payne, this body punts and postpones for another month any action. I'll also point out that last year, there was a proposal briefly introduced during budget to increase our own aides. That didn't go very far, and for good reason. The clerk pointed out in his presentation that our aides are not mandatory positions. We get to have them, and they support our individual work. But the city charter actually mandates that we create a council staff to support this body. That's something that we are required to do. And this fix that was proposed would not only correct the challenge that the city attorney and city auditor support, but it would allow us to comply with the requirement to create a council staff under the direction of the city clerk. So again, we've had four-plus, maybe closer to five months to get this done, and I'm disappointed that this council has once again pursued delay instead of action. So, President Payne, you have been taking a wait-and-see approach that you accused me of in a previous action today.
Scouting motives.
Once again, we're kicking the can down the road instead of making a decision. And the suggestion at committee from Councilmember Kosky that we need to hire an organizational design consultant to further this work is a little bit unwarranted. It is throwing away money. We have professional staff capable of handling this reorganization. As a matter of fact, all council members have offered compliments on many occasions about the work of the clerk's office and how it's an essential component of this city enterprise. That's how the phrase "nothing works without the clerks" came about, and I've heard you all say it. That work doesn't happen by chance. It happens because our clerk has shown that he has the professional experience and vision to organize an office. We're talking about 10 more positions. I have full confidence in the clerk's plans to incorporate that into the clerk's office. Hiring an outside consultant to do that is a waste of money in a time where fiscal challenges are looming. We talk about oversight. This is not good oversight, and in my opinion, this was not a hard decision. This ordinance could have been a unanimous decision, and here we are postponing the easy decision, the right decision, for yet another month. And even worse, we're deliberately allowing the conflict in the city charter to continue for another month. And I consider what a dereliction of our fundamental duty to uphold the city charter that is. So I'm disappointed, but I'm very concerned about this body's lax approach to upholding the city charter and obeying the law. And nobody seems to be paying attention to that. That brings me to our resolution on stress awareness and management today. I need to say that this body, President Payne, causes me and many others stress.
Okay.
I'd welcome a reduction in stress levels generated by the city council.
I added myself to queue. First, I want to correct a missed statement, misinformation. There was no proposal to add council aides in the budget. There was a proposal to extend professional staff for the legislative department that would serve the entire body, no individual aide. So let's make sure that we're using facts when we're making assertions here. Secondly, I'm gonna answer this not as the president of the city council, but I'm gonna answer this as the chair of the Audit Committee. I take the independence of the city auditor extremely seriously, and the fact of the matter is that the Audit Committee has been not in the loop as much as they should be when it comes to these types of substantive changes to the role of the city auditor. I have had direct feedback from Audit Committee members that they would like to understand more about what the impacts of this is and the why behind it. They have not had the opportunity to review and be in conversation about this new structure and the implications of this structure. Most of the committee members are actually new to the body, so they're on a learning curve just in general with what it means to be holding these very important roles. I'll also say that, I'll also say that the describing of motives is just really inappropriate when what we have right now and what we are responding to right now is really a rush to change our city government's structure, trying to chase after a problem that was not clearly defined with a plan that was not clearly laid out by our charter commission. Let's be clear about that. So we are in repair mode around a rush to change to a strong mayor system when we still have a lot of dysfunction in this institution that isn't resolved by having a strong mayor system. We have a lot of failure of management that has not been resolved by a strong mayor system. So we need to be very diligent as we move through these changes to government structure so that we're not rushing through to implement changes that are chasing after problems that are not understood with solutions that are half-baked. And the government structure that was passed on the ballot amendment was a half-baked ballot amendment. That's just a fact, and we-
That's describing motive.
That's ascribing motive.
Uh, I'm sorry. The, there's, I'm not ascribing motive to any individual actor. There's no individual that's named in that commentary. That is a structural analysis.
You're ascribing motive to people who put the ballot, uh, on out.
The structural analysis is that there was no plan of implementation on changing our government structure and that we had to try before you buy implement an ordinance that would actually effectuate the meaning of that charter change. And that's what the ordinance did. We did an omnibus ordinance under our last term to implement the change of the charter because those changes that were needed were not a part of the fundamental underlying charter, uh, ballot question. So we are now in a repair mode, and we're working diligently through those repairs and making sure that the body that is most important in this discussion, the audit committee, has an ample opportunity to weigh in, and I've extended an invitation to all of those committee members so that they can get the briefing that, uh, is sorely needed for them to understand this. And as it relates to the timing, uh, yes, we had a legal memo from the city attorney's office back in November of last year. We got a concurring memo from the city auditor last Thursday or Friday. So that is just the pace of change when we have so much change happening in this institution where we'd just had our new city auditor start not more than a month ago, and he's only just now had the opportunity to really weigh in on the, the substance of, of this charter change. And so with that, I think that's quite appropriate to allow our, uh, audit committee members to actually, uh, weigh in on this proposed amendment. Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, President Payne. I just want to thank you and the body for giving us that extra two cycles to figure this out. I wa, I want to be clear. The previous cycle before we started this term, uh, the omnibus ordinance was rushed, and we have seen complete dysfunction, uh, from that ordinance where we don't even know who's in charge anymore. We can't tell who leads the office of community safety anymore, where there is just complete dysfunction from the top. And I think it's part of the reason that, uh, the previous term, under different leadership, we had a rushed ordinance with not enough time that has led to this dysfunction. And I think I want to be clear, uh, this time, this month is very important for me. I think it's important to make sure that we get this right. If there's changes, great. If there isn't, good. At least we took that month to, time to make sure that we get this right, to ensure that we have a good legislative department that is, uh, important for, for our constituents. So I don't want what happened with the previous process with that government structure omnibus ordinance to have an impact in this process as we're trying to build up this legislative department. That's just not something that I want to be a part of. I want to make sure that we get this right. I think that month time is going to make this a lot more helpful and, uh, more substantial to make sure that we get this right the first time, not having to go back and make changes because we got it wrong. So I think it's fine to take that extra month to make sure that we get this right. It makes sense. It's our legislative department. We got to make sure that there are things in place to make sure that things are going to go well. It's not that serious.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Mr. Chair, is this legislative dysfunction? I take things that our city attorney says very seriously. I'm well aware of how audit works. I ran that committee for ten years. I'm well aware that we have public documents that show our auditor is supportive of this change. Last term, we had a consensus vote on government structure. It sure wasn't my favorite structure, and it wasn't anybody's favorite structure. It was something we could all live with. I need, I do not need my comments constantly clarified or reframed by another member of this body. I said what I said, and I stand by the things I say, and nobody up here has a right to reinterpret and restate my words constantly. I am, I hear decorum. I hear ascribing motive, but I don't ever hear that when people stand up here and want, sit up here and want to admonish the administration every single meeting.
Councilmember Vitale.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Palmasano. I'm, I'm feeling exactly what you're feeling. I really would love us to, I think I've said this before, I would love us to define, um, ascribing motives because it's only used for certain people and in certain instances. And then the other thing is, I really thought mansplaining was canceled and out of style too, yet President Payne continues to mansplain to, um, myself and Councilmember Palmasano in particular about what he thinks things are. You started this. Uh, as I recall, President Payne, you were the one who wanted this action six months ago when we started having these conversations. You and Vice President Chugtai were bringing something forward. Now, we actually have action. We've gotten a recommendation that's serving us, and it seems like there's some sort of fight to not do it, so then the mayor's administration can be blamed. This is on us. This is only harming us. This is, this position, this work, these departments are to serve us, the legislative body. I don't understand what we're waiting another month for. You just spent, I don't know, five minutes mansplaining to us what your interpretation was on the audit committee. It just sounds like you're trying to micromanage the clerk's office to me. That's what it sounds like. You're getting in the weeds of what the clerk's recommendation is, and because you're not satisfied with what the clerk is saying, or whatever is happening, I don't know. I, I, I mean, I don't even know what to say because I'm sure it's going to be considered ascribing motives because I'm speaking directly to the president, and I want to be speaking directly to the president. I mean, I really don't understand what we're doing here and what we're waiting a month for, and like, how is this not your responsibility as the person sitting on the audit committee and the person who wanted to bring this action forward and the person who's been working on this for as long as I could remember? It's been at least six months.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. If you want to speak directly to the president, then you should call him. This conversation is such a waste of time.
You should never tell me who to talk to. I think you need to mind your own business and talk to yourself. Don't you ever put yourself in queue to call yourself checking me. I know how to talk. I do not need Katie Cashman to tell me what to say.
All I want to say with my time, all I want to say with my time is that we can have a professional civil conversation about the legislation that's before us. We were at the very end of our agenda, having just finished a very quick meeting for-
Again, I don't need you to tell me anything.
Please don't interrupt me.
I don't need you to tell me anything.
Councilmember Vitale.
I'm actually referring to Councilmember Palmasano bringing this up at the very end of our agenda.
She can say what she wants to.
She can, of course, and so can I.
She does not need you policing her words.
Councilmember Cashman.
Listen, I just wanted to get through a productive city council meeting. We've had one of the shortest city council meetings that we've ever had. Can we all please be respectful of our time and the reason that we're here, which is to serve our constituents, not to create drama, to create news stories, to create conflict where it didn't exist? And let's get into our closed session to talk about the settlement agreement with the Department of Justice, which is a priority for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for running the meeting and telling us what we should be doing with our time.
Councilmember Vitale, please.
You can't tell her. You clearly won't say anything.
With that, we've completed all the items on, well, we have two items, uh, from COW that we will take up after the closed session, uh, items number three and four. And I will now consider the request for a closed session, which is to receive a briefing on the litigation manner, uh, matter listed on the agenda. Before I move to close the meeting, I'll recognize the city attorney to provide the legal basis for the requested closed session.
Mr. President, councilmembers, the next item on the agenda is the case of the United States of America versus the City of Minneapolis, Minnesota District Court, number 25 CB 00048. Your attorneys wish to discuss with the council, um, updates on litigation accordingly under the Minnesota Open Meeting Law, Minnesota Statute, Section 13D .05 subdivision 3B. The council may upon a proper motion close the meeting for the purpose of attorney-client communication as permitted by the attorney-client privilege. In considering the motion, the council should weigh the right of the public to know what its government is doing against the need of the city to preserve the confidentiality of its discussions with its attorneys.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. I move to close our public meeting as authorized under the open meeting law, specifically Minnesota Statute, Section 13D dot 05, for the purpose of receiving a briefing on the litigation matter of the United States Department of Justice versus City of Minneapolis and Minneapolis Police Department. May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison is absent. Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury is absent. Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman is absent. Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai is absent. President Payne.
Aye.
There are nine ayes.
That carries. For the viewing public, we, I will note that the broadcast of this meeting will continue, and the council will reconvene in public after we've concluded the closed session.
Thank you.
On the CNI Committee Report, Councilmember Chowdhury, your vote?
Aye.
And Vice President Shug Thay?
Aye.
That's 13 ayes on the Climate and Infrastructure Report. The first item from the Committee of the Whole, Councilmember Chowdhury, your vote?
Aye.
And Vice President Shug Thay?
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on that item. The Committee of the Whole, report number two, Councilmember Chowdhury, your vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Osman?
Aye.
And Vice President Shug Thay?
Aye.
Have 12, 13 on count number two. And then from the IGR Report, Councilmember Chowdhury, your vote?
Aye.
Vice President Shug Thay?
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on that report. On the Public Health and Safety Committee Report, items one, three, four, and five, so not item two, Councilmember Chowdhury, your vote?
Aye.
Vice President Shug Thay?
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on that report from the Public Health and Safety Committee, item number two. Councilmember Chowdhury, your vote?
Aye.
Vice President Shug Thay?
Nay.
That puts 10 ayes and 3 nays on that item. The next item I had was the Introduction and Referral Calendar, Councilmember Chowdhury, your vote?
Aye.
Vice President Shug Thay?
Aye.
13 on that. On the resolutions that were presented today, Councilmember Chowdhury, your vote?
Aye.
Vice President Shug Thay?
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on that, and that completes all of the outdated reports, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next, we will take up items number three and four from the COW Agenda. I see we have a revised resolution from Councilmember Osman. Councilmember Osman, would you like to speak to that? Yes, thank you so much, Council President, colleagues. We have been busy last few weeks, I mean, last few days since Tuesday. I would say that, you know, Office of Community Safety got it wrong here. It doesn't make sense taking violent interrupters away from Cedar Riverside and Elliott Park that existed last few years. We have invested in the past and funded these programs to be in this area, and we have seen the positive outcome and crime going down. Why are we stepping back from progress that we have made? When I asked that question here, I was told that the data doesn't support it because the area is safe. That's the point. We invested, area is safe. So I am bringing this resolution, funding that area. Let me just say this, we're not taking away Northside Violence Interrupters. We want to remain that, I support that, and I want to make sure that Northside Violence Interrupters remain in that area. But it's crucial for these services to exist in Cedar Riverside and to continue the safety of our city. So I'm taking the public safety aid balance, $650,000 one-time funding, and adding that to the Neighborhood Safety Department Violent Interrupter Services for Cedar Riverside and Elliott Park. I will really appreciate my colleagues' understanding, the struggle and the challenges of some of our neighborhoods have. I will tell you, and my residents have showed up here testifying, you have seen the supportive letters that are coming from residents, businesses, and institutions that are placed in there that this model in Cedar Riverside and Elliott Park have worked. So I hope to get your support. I'm someone who deeply care about the safety of our residents and the safety of a city in Minneapolis. So let's make a smart decision, and let's hope that these services remains in Elliott and Cedar Riverside. Thank you so much for your support, and I'll pass that. I'll move this item forward for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you. Just wanted to speak on this and just thank Councilmember Osman for hearing the Northside Councilmembers. I want to thank all my colleagues who have been in contact with Councilmember Osman, helping sort this out. I know that it's really tough for some of my colleagues to use this source, but I think that we've got, we've got time to remedy that, I think, because some of this money's not supposed to be deployed until 2026. And so we've got some time to remedy the impact of the source, which is why I think it's a good use for now. We can deploy these dollars this year. We can support the work that's happened in Cedar Riverside. I think a couple of years ago, everyone would have conceded that Cedar Riverside needed this service and agreed with that. We shouldn't punish an area for success of the service. And if we remove the service without fully knowing what's going to happen, we could see regression, and then we're right back to square one, which is why I support Councilmember Osman's motion. So I support the source, I support this direction. The next motion, we're going to talk about, you know, the, we're going to affirm the maintenance of the previous monies in Zone Two, so that's sort of coming up for the next, for the next, for item number four. But just wanted to thank my colleagues, who I know had a lot of tough conversations, in order to get us to a yes here.
Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you. I have a question for the author. So is this the fund where we allocated $300,000 to the 10 business districts? Different? Okay, great, thank you. And then just, I'm going to vote for this with great reluctance, because, you know, we've talked earlier about having data and a clear plan. This has come out of the blue, you were just negotiating this in a back room a half hour ago. And we also had a comment, you weren't here for that, but we talked about the issue with our, with our clerk's office, and it was brought up that we should take the time to do something right. So again, we're not really taking the time to do this, because you were in the back room for a half hour. But I will vote for this. I just hope that going forward, if the areas of my ward that are getting punished, would not get punished for success, because the allocations for these non-arm public safety in downtown and the riverfront are endangered. So I'm going to support you today, but I hope you all remember this, because I do it with great reluctance.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the thing that felt really important for me in considering this item is what services currently exist and what are forthcoming, and prioritizing that. I think that's a pragmatic approach. What we know is that services to Cedar Riverside and Elliott Park, based off of contracts, that's set to expire on March 31st. And it makes me feel deeply uncomfortable to not have services in this area, especially as we are heading into the warmer months. That's when we know violence in our communities upticks. And I think we're in a situation where services have been provided in this area very successfully, and are a part of incidents going down. And so the incidents aren't up as a metric to say, this is a, this is an area that should support services. But living in Minneapolis, knowing the Cedar Riverside community, knowing the Elliott Park area, it is really, I believe, a real gamble to take away services from these areas where relationships are needed, where cultural competency is needed. And I just don't want us to end up in a place where it's July or August, and things are happening that are harming community, and we don't, we had an opportunity to ensure that there were people on the ground that have tested relationships to prevent incidents. I think we oftentimes don't get the opportunity to have hindsight. So that's why I'll be supporting this item. I appreciate us sourcing from this area rather than what was brought forward previously, because this is not funding that is allocated, and we have opportunities here in the budget cycle to figure that out. I also will call out and say I think it's important that we have conversations with each other about the areas of our city that continue to need attention. And yeah, I mean, I have consistently supported efforts within the downtown area, going to support efforts here today. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Mr. Chair, a question, because this is before me, I wasn't invited to conversations about this, but I did have a conversation briefly in the hall with Councilmember Osman yesterday. Cure Violence Global recommended eight geographic areas for violence interruption services, and Cedar Riverside, was that one of them? Yeah, it wasn't. If it had been, I may feel differently, but it wasn't. Are all of these eight suggested geographic areas being covered? And now we're going further into the public safety aid money to do that? Are all eight of them covered? We have a vendor providing us with data-backed recommendations, and I'm just curious, what are we paying them for if we don't believe them? We talk all the time about making objective decisions, and this feels like it flies in the face of that. How can we support this, knowing there are other geographic areas that have been identified as needing services that are uncontracted or unfunded? Providing services in this city would come to a standstill if we took what we wanted for our own neighborhoods with no regard for others and the overall health of our city. I took an oath to uphold the needs of the city of Minneapolis, not Ward 13, and you all did the same. Ward Six receives different types of public safety services by other means. One of those examples is the Safety Ambassador Program. Ward Six is not going without services, and if this moves forward today, perhaps some of the other budget allocations using public safety aid funds from the state of Minnesota should go back and be reconsidered. I do support, if it is still intact, this legislative directive to look at and evaluate how those services have gone in the Cedar Riverside and Elliott Park area. I think it is important to go and evaluate and see, is this in a data-driven way? Are we getting the outcomes from what has been there in the past? Thank you.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I think it's important that we work towards more safety services citywide, not less. You're right, all eight of the Cure Violence recommended areas should have funding, and I think we should make that a goal of ours, to make sure that all eight of the recommended areas do have funding. We cannot have a scarcity mindset right now. We need to know that there is enough for safety services to go around. And I, you know, people move through the city, violence moves through the city, we are all in this together. Elliott Park is a downtown neighborhood, and it borders my ward, and what happens in Elliott Park impacts Ward Seven. So I think that we need more unarmed safety services citywide. I will support this, because Councilmember Osman did the work in the last couple of days to pull money from a source that didn't impact anybody else's current service levels in their wards.
Vice President Chuck Thay.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, wanted to just thank colleagues for the discussion on this, on this item on Tuesday in COW. I think, I think there were a number of things we learned throughout that discussion that mattered to, to, to all members or, or members of this body. One of those being that, you know, any type of future cut to service to Zone Two in North Minneapolis as a result of using those resources for this amendment was, was, was a non-starter. And I think that that is one of the things this amendment allows us to do, is, is make sure that those resources are, are, are dedicated to coming to North Minneapolis, and that there is a continuation of services there in, in the near future. Now, the second piece I think we really heard throughout the discussion was, you know, it is important to figure out how to continue services in North Minneapolis, or in, in Cedar Riverside, the second piece of this, Cedar Riverside, Elliott Park. You know, I think there's a, there are a number of comments that have been made throughout the discussion, both today and at COW on Tuesday, around what, what zones were recommended by the Cure Violence model, and, or through the partnership with Cure Violence, and what the Cure Violence model actually is, and making data-driven decisions. And I think it's important to consider a couple of unique pieces of this. First, that, that the Cure Violence model advocates for and recommends a maintenance approach to violence interruption services, that it is important, when you invest in violence interruption services in a given community, and you start to see them positively impact the, the safety in that community, that you should continue to maintain those services so you don't see a regression like what Councilmember Ellison was referencing earlier. Now, the second important piece in determining where services should go certainly is, is the, the data based on, you know, calls for service, certain types of violence that is happening in a community. That did happen. We know that, because that's what our staff presented to us and spoke about extensively, all of those different factors. An important piece of the consideration when determining when geog, what geographies are receiving investment, how those zones are created in the first place, is, is taking into account the unique cultural needs of a given community. And but in this context, we talk about community as in given, as in the city of Minneapolis, and, you know, Cure Violence relies on subject matter experts within the community that they are working with to have an understanding of what those different cultural needs may be, what types of services exist in, in different parts of that city right now, or that community right now, what they're, what, how that has worked. The, the unique cultural needs of Minneapolis were not really considered as a part of determining these zones. Had they been considered, which again is an important part of the Cure Violence model, I think it's very possible we may have seen, you know, the, both this consideration plus the maintenance consideration include the Cedar Riverside and Elliott Park community as a part of one of the top needed recommendations. Now, we can't go back in time and undo that, or, or, you know, account for that and project what the outcomes would be. What we can do is, based on the model, prioritize a maintenance approach. Based on the recommendations of the model, prioritize the unique cultural needs and, and realities within our city. And I think this, this path allows us to do that. Now, I understand that this is taken from the Community Safety Center pilots allocation, which, you know, colleagues may remember was on the chopping block just last summer. And, and over the course of the year, little bits of these resources have been taken to invest in specific types of pilots and, and other needs that are in the South Minneapolis community. I, I, you know, that was an amendment, this allocation first came to exist as a result of an amendment brought forward by councilmembers Wansley, Osman, and Chowdhury. And I think that, you know, I, I know that this is a difficult choice to make here, too. There are no good choices. But I understand- But I understand how committed you are to making sure that the Community Safety Center, when it opens, and the projection right now is in the fall of 2026, has an abundance of services beyond just the police department, which I know is something our administration is committed to as well. And as we continue, as this year continues to unfold and this budget season unfolds, you know, I'd love to, you know, offer partnership and work with you to make sure that the different pilots and needs that you want to see addressed in the Community Safety Center and your community needs to see at the new South Minneapolis Community Safety Center are prioritized as well. And thank you, Mr. President.
With that, I see no one else left in queue. We have items number, councilmember Paul Masano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know this is my second time speaking on this item, and I'll be brief. Councilmember Cashman says we shouldn't have a scarcity mindset here. Yet this council took half of the money from the Neighborhood Safety Department the last budget cycle. So first, refund that money, then go ahead and find funding for the eight places that Cure Violence data identified that this money should be used for, and evaluate this, and consider making this the ninth location. I don't think we should be taking from Safety Center efforts and trying to finally move that forward. Would that delay this? Would that delay our Community Safety Center even longer? I don't want any delays or any funding shortages to stop progress there. I just needed to state these, to have it in front of you as we take these votes.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. Absolutely, I agree, we should work to fund all of the Cure Violence recommended sites, as well as this maintenance approach in Cedar Riverside and Elliott Park, that our councilmember is so adamantly advocating for, which I think is admirable. But just wanted to add that most of the drop in NST's budget was the move of BCR to the fire department. So it was not a reduction in services, it was a transfer of funds from one department to the other to maintain that service level. So I don't want anyone reading or listening to this broadcast to be confused.
Councilmember Chavez.
And I want to name that the majority of those fundings that councilmember Masano talked about were nearly veto-proof every single time. Like, that budget, councilmember Masano took that vote to move a lot of that funding from the fire department, no, from our OCS, from BCR moving BCR into the fire department. So I just want to clarify that. I also want to give some information, because I think it's important to add some clarification in this conversation. This body nearly took that entire $4 million last summer, including consumers that are expressing concerns about saving this center now, and nearly gutted an entire $4 million out of the Community Safety Center. It took some of us in this body to come up with a solution to save those $4 million in that Community Safety Center. But I want to be clear, many people in this body tried to take that $4 million. So it rings hollow to hear that now somehow we care about this center, when members took that vote trying to take the South Minneapolis Community Safety Center pilots away from our community. We can figure this out in the upcoming budget, it's going to be fine. But I just don't, I don't like this standard about somehow a member being willing to take a vote almost, to take $4 million away from our community, and then now somehow it's an issue. It just doesn't make sense.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. Thank you to my colleagues for offering some of the clarifications around the budget amendments that were made regarding Neighborhood Safety Department and Office of Community Safety in terms of the BCR vote, because I've heard that be stated on NSTDIAS multiple times. I need the public also to know that that vote was separate from any funding streams within the Neighborhood Safety Department. Additionally, I am appreciative of my colleagues' commitment to work with my office in figuring out how we can also replenish those funds, so that third precinct residents do have a broad range of services outside of just armed services in that site, when it's basically intended to open in fall of 2026. So I look forward to working with you all on that. And also, I am so glad that we're in a space where we're talking about actually fully funding these programs. That was never often in the conversation before, and so I'm happy to see a switch. And I really hope, when we're entering into our budget process and everyone submit their budget priorities, that you all talk about fully funding GBI, YGBI, Minneapolis, and a lot of the initiatives that you all have credited to keep your community safe under the Neighborhood Safety Department, and for us to have alignment on that and see some significant investments into these programs come budget season in December. So look forward to working with you all on that.
Now, seeing no one left in queue, we have items number three and four. Item number three is a revised resolution from councilmember Osmond. I believe this resolution from councilmember Wonsley and Ellison are a compendium to that. Is that correct, or is that a separate?
Number four.
That's with the number four?
Yeah.
Okay. So on item number three, the revised resolution by councilmember Osmond, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins, is absent.
Councilmember Masano.
No.
Councilmember Chowdhry.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes and one nay.
That item carries. Next, we will take up item number four, which is vendor selection for Elliott Park and Cedar Riverside Violence Interrupter Services Legislative Directive. Councilmember Osmond, did you want to speak to that?
No, it's right front of you, I think you have a copy. Just some more information to be reported. Thank you.
Okay. So this is the resolution by Wonsley and Ellison. Okay.
I think this is a legislative directive, and it's not in front of you, it's in the agenda packet. So we don't have a separate printed copy in front of you, but it is in the packet, and it is available online. But just to be clear, it's a legislative directive.
Okay. So for the Wonsley and Ellison resolution, that will be a separate vote we take. Okay. On item number four, the legislative directive, councilmember Wonsley.
No, I just want a motion after we take this vote.
Okay. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins, is absent. Councilmember Masano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhry.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That item carries, and then next, I'll recognize councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. Colleagues, the resolution that I am moving for approval alongside with my co-author, councilmember Ellison, is to essentially have council express support for the administration to resolicit the Minneapolis contract that had originally been proposed to cover an area of the North Side, specifically outlined as Zone 2 in the staff's presentation. We all know the prior administration originally proposed six Minneapolis contracts, but a week and a half ago requested that one of those contracts be returned to staff, and then we considered the five instead. So I know we heard lots of concerns on Tuesday around, you know, making sure that Zone 2 maintained also services through this program. And I know also, and agree, North Side residents should not have to pay for mishaps with the administration of these contracts by the administration, and should not lose services. So that's why I worked with councilmember Ellison to author this resolution, which expressed supports for that resolicitation for violence interruption services in Zone 2. That said, I also believe the resolicitation is the best way to ensure that needed violence interruption services and resources are being directed into a community through a contract with a vendor that can deliver high-quality safety services using the Cure Violence model as well. And that will have a transparent, vetted procurement and RFP process to get there. So just offering that context, and we'll pass it to councilmember Ellison.
Councilmember Ellison. Thank you. Just wanted to thank all my colleagues who are involved again in this discussion. You know, it's complicated. We're trying to make sure that everywhere in the city that needs these services is getting these services. And we don't get it 100% right, but, you know, I think six out of eight is a great start. I think the conversation that we had about cultural competency and cultural corridors who also need these services, I think is a needed one, is a valid conversation for us to be having. And I want to thank councilmember Wonsley in, you know, being willing to affirm and recognize the need for Zone 2 to maintain coverage. I know when the administration requested that the contract for Zone 2 be pulled for further review, that was not, the intention was not that Zone 2 would then lose those services. The admin is still, has that contract under review, that's their process. But based on the information that we know publicly, we think, you know, this is what, this is the direction that we feel like we should go in. And I want to ensure that regardless of what the admin decides, that these dollars don't get redistributed to selected zones, make sure that Zone 2 is affirmed to have coverage under this program. And while this isn't binding to the admin, we know that, I think that we all have witnessed how things have unfolded enough to say, hey, we want to make sure Zone 2 has coverage, and we want to make sure that whoever gets the contract has, doesn't have question marks about their ability to deliver those services. And we think resoliciting the contract is the best pathway forward. So just wanted to say that, and again, thank my colleagues. Obviously, thank councilmember Vitale as well for all the conversations we've had about these services being needed and remaining on the North Side. Councilmember Vitale.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember Ellison, for this. Tuesday, when you said you were going to work it out, I wasn't sure that it'd be worked out in 48 hours, so I'm feeling good about it. Thank you so much. We need these services, it's imperative that we have these services. I really do think that the community is going to be pleased with us figuring this out. So thank you so much. Thank you, councilmember Wonsley, for co-authoring this. And also to you, councilmember Osmond, for figuring out a way to make sure that you get what you need. I'll be coming soon with a way to figure out for 35th and Penn to get funded. It was not in those zones, but it needs to be covered. So thank you for giving me the blueprint on how to get that done. It's coming to a diocese near you really soon. But really, colleagues, I appreciate the support on this. These are services and jobs, as I previously said, that are needed on the North Side, and people will be grateful that this council came together and figured this out for North Minneapolis. Thank you.
Councilmember Rainville.
I just want to express my gratitude to councilmembers Ellison and Wonsley for working with councilmember Vitale and figuring this out, so we do not leave our North Side neighbors behind.
With that, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the resolution.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins, is absent. Councilmember Masano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhry.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the full Cal report is adopted.